Okay, it is nine o'clock on Monday, October 26th. And I called the Potter County Commissioners Court. We had trouble securing a preacher to depony of vacation, so I have asked Sheriff to do that, and he has said he would. So if we won't please stand or please stop.
Good morning. Lord, we just come to you to say we thank you for this glorious day, and we thank you for the rain that we've had, the sun that we have today, and just, Lord, we just praise you for everything that we have. Lord, we just ask you to be with us today as we make the decisions to make this the greatest county in the state of Texas. Lord, we just ask you to be with each of the commissioners as they ponder each item that is brought before them, Lord, and we just ask you to thank us and praise us for the things that we're doing for your service. Lord, we just ask you to be with us today and all those around us, and to keep us all safe, including our military that are fighting for our freedoms and everything. Lord, we just ask all this in your sense of calling it.
Lord, we give this to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We honor the Texas flag, our flag of allegiance to the Texas world state under God, one nation indivisible.
The line of the agenda is the recognition of the minutes from October 12th to November 12th. There are no questions on this, no corrections, so recognize. Number two, vouchers to consider and act upon review on the payment of vouchers processed by the county office of the period of October 7, 2015, October 21st, 2015. Check numbers 165031 through 16539, and wire transfer 620 through 627, 29,203,17,839.26. You have a motion?
That's it? Go ahead. I'm going to kneel. Voucher is stated by the county.
Second. Have a motion and a second. On the favor of Judge Ryan. Thank you very much. Insurance report, recognize insurance report, okay? Do you want to come on up because you have that next one too?
Sure.
So, so recognize on number three. For recovery benefits, county choice silver, consider an act upon renewal of county's participation in the county choice silver program in county materials. County County has participated in the county choice silver for a number of years. This is just a renewal of that program. County choice silver is Medicare supplement that we offer to employees that are retiring that are Medicare eligible as an option for Medicare supplement for them. We do not have anything to do with the billing or anything like that. It's billed directly through United Healthcare. And I don't have any idea of participation levels because that's handled directly through United Healthcare, but we have participated in the past, and all premiums are paid 100% by retirees. Two twenty-seven months, okay? That was the current rate, the new rate, effective January 1st, when we took the process.
And yet, it's limited to patients.
I don't really know how much participation we have because they don't communicate with us at all, and we don't see those billings or have access to any of that information. They are put directly in contact with United Healthcare, and Texas Association of Counties does not even have access to that information. But it's an option that we give up on cases in point of advice.
Has this rate continued to increase year to year?
In my history here, it has gone up slightly each year, as most other insurance has. It's not uncommon.
I move that we approve the county's participation in the county choice silver for county retirees.
Second, for discussion, I just have one quick follow-up question. Kate, do we have any due diligence and necessary RN to notify them of the increase, or United Healthcare does all that?
United Healthcare does all that. Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor, Judge Ryan, please. Okay. Do I have to do have the original contract for every sign this one? From backwards. Okay. Treasurers' report, recognize monthly treasures report, and recognize the Portland treasurer of the reports. Good morning. How was the waiting?
It was beautiful. The weather was so best.
Good.
It's so pleasant.
Okay. I'm just going to sort of combine the monthly treasures and the investment report together, just kind of give you a total where we are. I still have 3.4 million in our checking. Tax pool is 398, which is earning 10 basis points this morning. Tax pool prime, I have 2 million, a little over, and it's at 17 this morning. So we've kind of been climbing there. The $3 million cedars will mature the 29th end of this week, and it will, I'm going to move that in the interest into our general account, so we'll have that cash available till our tax dollars start coming in, just in case we need it. And that'll also help be a buffer to hopefully not have to use the 7 million that we want to carry out through the year if we can. So tow with the 7 million cedars, the 3 that will mature, and the 5.8 that total cash this morning is 15.8 million dollars in our general fund. So, any questions on that? I did meet with the investment committee. We are looking at some changes, if you want to diversify a little further. And so we have a meeting set for November 4th for some options, and then we'll present that in the next court to you guys and let you know what some other options we have with the representation. So it'll be really good. And earning higher interest, so that's good news there. Any questions?
Maybe just a suggestion, especially if you're looking at some changes for next year, would it be possible to maybe get a graphical image of some type, like comparing this time today to last year, and just seeing, you know, the ebbs and flows of the investment strategy?
Oh, on the investment side? I'm sorry, we don't have the charge for the cash.
The cash, yes, but on the investment side, that might be good to see, especially when we have a quarterly one, I think that might be helpful.
Okay. Anything else? So recognized, you're still, I guess, yes, me. Resolution amending authorized representatives to tax pool. Anytime we make changes to the account, it does require a court resolution, and so we are removing Paula and adding Lundy to the list. You only have a copy because it was information, I didn't want the whole thing listed. So here's the original. If you'll sign that, and then we need Julie.
Is there a reason for the change?
We're sad about that, too. Okay, I'll sign this. With the resolution, do they need a ballot on it, or is just it being signed? This is a resolution, I mean. We need to vote. Okay, send me a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution amending authorized representatives to tax pool.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor, Judge Ryan. Zero, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Number seven, town of Bush subdivision lab, release of interest in undeveloped roads and outlays. Authorizing release of the road dedication and portion of the track designated as 9th Street on the plate of Bush.
We have another request, we've got this property around First Baptist Church in Bushland that still, that they and one of their neighbors are actually occupying. It shows that a road, what should, would be a road on subdivision lab is actually, you can kind of see the remnants of the road or, but nobody uses it, it's really on their private property. We have no interest in developing it, and they've asked us to release this section, a couple of extra tracks, and that's where this will come in. I think Roadbridge, I understand from talking to Jeff Ponder, the minister of our message last week, the impact of the kid debt, I think, with Roadbridge guys right? And, you know, we always make sure, live in class, and make sure we don't have, I mean, there's no way to ever want to develop this as a road. And so, and just as a reminder, we have no real legal interest, ownership interest, in any of those plating roads out there until such times we've built. We have never accepted all these roads, so really, what the landowners just want is just an indication to us that we don't intend to ever take over that, exercise our right to develop a road of that, of that piece.
Should be your mind reformed around to this week, where you better. Your mind would be a bit closer to you.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I wouldn't even think of that.
Does Miss Church, anything you'd want to add to this particular?
No, the only question I had, this would be flat, given over to the church.
Yes, I, yeah, exactly. Actually, well, that's not, actually, there's one part of a track is between, is the road, they own on one side of the road, and there's a landowner that owns on the other side of the road, so actually, we'll be giving it to both of them. It's kind of a joint request.
Does that affect the taxes for the one?
Probably. I don't know if they're already been taxed for that at all, but it would add, it would add the tax. I mean, if it's not being taxed already, it would be.
What would their interest be in this? What would they do about this? I guess my question is, why would they want to do this?
The property owners? Well, in most cases, it's because they've already built something on property, and they've already been exercising ownership over it anyway. In fact, I think that may be taxed here. I think, I think private landowner is actually building some kind of a storage building or something that actually kind of goes into what would be First Baptist Church's property. So there's, they're already, people are already using that property to garden on or to put out buildings on or something like that, so.
Okay, have a motion.
I move that we approve the release of interest in undeveloped roads part of that street on the, uh, Allen Bush.
Second. Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor, Judge Ryan. Thank you. Number eight, Center City to consider an act upon the extension of Hining on the Square from the last week in July to the first two weeks in August, because it's so great. Beth sent me a letter asking if we could just extend that, and she's asking if you have time, because she just runs that one. So do you want to say something about that?
Thank you.
Tell me, it's so good we was going to make more money.
It is so good, we just want to throw two more parties on the lawn. I got to say that I'm, for one thing, thank you for having me here this morning. We love the partnership with Potter County. We make so many people happy through Hining on the Square, and last year we broke records, attendance, sponsorship, and great crowds. Several of you were able to come and enjoy it, and I hope you get to come again this year. We had a lot of requests to extend it through August. We thought the home of the August was too much because of some of our other events, and also because school starts, but we thought if we could add two more Wednesdays, then we could make, make it another event for families to enjoy through the summer.
Motion, intended the hours here, 10 o'clock?
We are going to have it from, it'll be from 11:30 to 1:00, and then by 1:30, you won't even know we were here. Your crew got a compliment, my cab and the crew, and all of our volunteers. Once the music stops, we clean it up, and we're out of your hair.
That's one thing that I noticed that you go by there, it's like nothing.
Thank you for that. Thank you. We just appreciate the partnership. I think it is great for Potter County and for Center City. We would like to continue it.
I make a motion that we approve the extension of Hining on the Square from the last week in July to the first two weeks in August, 2016.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, Judge Ryan. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, don't forget, you're invited to join us for the Electric Light Parade, December 4th. I know Commissioner Agia is already working on her float, so you don't want to be left behind. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, number nine, enforcement of commissioners to departments, subcommittees court. Consider an act upon voting of commissioners to different departments, and to inform county judges of the department. Since I took all this to Jay Moore, I have not had a department that I'm over, and Judge Ware was all I was having in the program, and I have not had one, so it's considering taking one. I'm going to ask you one at a time. Are you happy with the ones that you are over right now, Commissioner?
I would like to hear from the ones that I'm over.
Well, they happen to be here. So you're over facilities, and you're over HR department. That's something you can do, you were HR. That's why we did it. So you're happy with?
As long as they're happy on it.
Okay, here's, here's the proposal. I would like to take IT, and maybe on a six-month basis or whatever, I was going to see what's going on with the case management system, and I just want to be sure I'm in the loop. I would be consider working with Commissioner Moby on it, along with Jason. But I do want to ask you this, too. Commissioners, are y'all meeting with your departments on a regular basis? Do you think it would be possible to report someone, if you file it all the way back to the state, how many things are going on? Can you do that?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, is that good with everybody? Okay, so do we need a motion to, to change this petition name? Yeah. Okay. Josh, just like Scott, you do good. Okay, I make a motion that, well, maybe I shouldn't make a motion. I'll make a motion that I'm wanting over, that I am over IT department for six-month trial, but see how it goes. Is that okay with you, Jason?
We'll see if I agree with you.
Okay. Okay, I'm just in a second. All in favor, Judge Ryan. Okay. Next is local government corporation, which will be either report on that.
So the LGC, as you know, involves many new members, so the composition and trying to get it formulated and set some meeting schedules. The LGC will be meeting, it's in front of me, it's the first and the third, regular meeting times, first and third Wednesday of each month at 11:30 in room 306 Emerald City Hall. So that location is always been the same location, but there have been some fluctuations in the dates. So the meeting schedule, I think, will help all of the members to get those on the calendar at a consistent time. And then the LGC operates, that with public notice, we can call it kind of an emergency at any point, but of course, with public notice to do that. The new members, the biggest change, everything is still on schedule in terms of the projects. There's obviously been lots of groundbreaking events the last couple of weeks, but the biggest change I wanted to report back to the Commissioners Board is the subcommittees. So prior to this new leadership in LGC, the president had authority to appoint and to sit in on all the subcommittees, and those were given in a lot of the kind of small detail, whether that's projects, the contracting piece, et cetera. So the biggest change is that that autonomy is no longer with the president, it goes back to the LGC board and the voting members of that board to designate who was on that subcommittee. And so part of that is just really to be mindful of power, positions of power within the LGC, and that it all resides with, with the voting members of that board. So that continues to evolve, and the agenda item that they had on there is an ex officio seat, which you know is the seat that we have. We have an ex officio, so I know that that's being vetted of the bylaws and what a new structure might be. So as that continues to evolve, all, and that can report to the board.
Is there conversation being engaged towards the ex officio seat and making that, Olivia, and making that voting seat?
There is, yes. There is. And what that structure might look like, loosely, it's been discussed of how many seats we have, and is that kind of right by Potter County, because obviously, we pay times two to any jurisdiction into the tiers fund, which isn't directly going to the LGC, but they are really kind of an arm or extension as the big project. So the fact that we're on there, but in June of last year, I think is when we got our ex officio seat, but that is being vetted of what that future might look like.
So they currently have seven voting members in the ex officio?
And the ex officio is DAI, Melissa Daley, and then Potter County, and then we have our city manager that sits in on those, as well as the city secretary that is in charge of the minutes and a legal counsel for the city.
Hi, Eric. I'd like to just say a few things. I think that local government corporation is kind of taking on a same flavor as the city council. I mean, that's not necessarily a good thing. And if we do become a voting member of this group, I'd like to see us as a body have some say in how that vote will go. And as I look through the minutes of the LGC and see attendance, have low concerns, representation, that we've only been there one meeting more than half the time, so if, if we are to continue, and if we become a voting member on this board, we need to have some agreement.
Agreed. And one thing that I would add, just in terms of recommunication, if you will, the city council members that sit on the LGC are Councilman Burkett and Councilman Ead, so those are the two representatives in terms of the city council that's on there. And then as I spoke to you, just personally, in terms of the meeting schedule, I'm very grateful that it's on a set schedule, because I absolutely do my best to be 100% flexible, and I think the full commission knows that, and LGC is the downtown topics. All those three pioneer projects are in precinct two, so I absolutely feel I had done my homework and have been very mindful of reporting back to the board, and will absolutely do that with the voting seat. That will not change.
Is there any topical, especially about, since the council has two seats, the county has a little bit of two seats as well?
We're, I'm advocating for anything they'll give us at this point. We're ex officio, so if we're at the table, I think absolutely we should be voting, and if the discernment of those that currently can vote is to add additional, I think as a board, we would welcome that, and that's been the message that I shared.
Number 11, Bishop Ranges, proposal for county improvement of roads. Agent, you heard the report from the county clerk on the outcome of the election, among record property owners to improve certain roads and assess the property owners with the costs. Here is a list, it passed, and I suggest of all of the people that ballots were sent to, how they voted, if the ballots were thrown, you know, undeliverable or whatever, and at the bottom is a recap of that.
Is that different than what was in the package, Julie?
Yeah, we are.
I just didn't know if anything changed. Only thing that's missing is this.
Yeah, it is, and I just did a recap right at the bottom, just to show how many were sent.
Okay, okay, all right.
So it went past. So B, if the proposition was approved, why does any of those voting order the improvements and assist the cost of providing chapter 253 of Texas transportation code? So do we make a motion on this, for voting or anything, Dave?
Yeah, I think you need to, at this point, I'm trying to decide what, I've been kind of finalized the terms of how y'all want this to be paid out over time. I think the, I think the discussion in the, my copy of the ballot.
That is pretty well understood, and that ballot flip is over 10 years.
Yeah, and I think, I think, at this point, I think we just need to, yes, thanks. And I guess, I guess we probably all send out a letter to all the property owners saying this is for the.
So who will lead that phase, just in terms of the process now? Who will lead up sending out the letter?
I don't, that's, I think your decision.
Who shouldn't be sending out letters?
That's the decision.
I'm sorry, Karen, I didn't hear that second.
I'm not sure how the assessment will go out. It's out of the law, this is what we're responsible for, the tax office will search.
Have you vetted that, Commissioner Church?
It's going to be on our tax bills. Logically, that would be what you do.
Share your, share your hand right here.
Can it be added to the tax bill? I'm not sure.
How much time do you need, though, to get it on there?
Yeah, this, this, we're not, we're not trying to avoid any responsibility. We just don't know. I mean, the statute's not clear on this. I mean, I suggest that, I mean, whatever you guys would be willing to do, I think would probably be acceptable in service teams, especially with, I wouldn't want owners having any preference about how that's done. I suspect they don't.
I don't think.
Sending out a tax bill would be easier to see a law on everybody, just assuming it's easy to do.
We have improvement districts throughout the area. How are they? And I think that's the, and it's exactly the same one. And that's on the tax.
So what my question, though, Karen, is, but how long would it take, knowing this now, when do, when do the tax bills go out?
They're going out this year, because we're waiting till that November 3rd election.
So after that, do you have time to get this new information, only to have most certain?
I doubt for this year.
Because that'd be next year then?
Probably so, yeah.
I think it'd be appropriate to wait until the work is done.
So do we do a letter to them?
Probably.
So should we, I mean, I would have assumed there's a formal process prior to sending out ballots, so shame on me for assuming. Well, should we get together as a subcommittee and formulate this process? Because even if there's non-payment, isn't there a process, shouldn't there be a process in place? And I'm not saying I expect there to be non-payment.
I don't even think you need to, I mean, I, I, certainly, if the subcommittee wants to, I think that's probably far their aim to do. I mean, I think, I mean, I think what I would suggest is, let's find out how, if, you know, if it could indeed be added on this one. I mean, I think, actually, I kind of think Commissioner Church's suggestion is the best. Let's wait till it works, and then we can address this next year. And then we'll, but in the meantime, we can send a letter to everyone, just saying, just FYI, Commissioners passed, I think that's a very simple thing to do. We can do that in our office if you want to, if you don't pay postage.
They want it to come out right there.
Just a form letter saying, just, you know, just to confirm that, you know, that Commissioners Board passed that, and we anticipate the work being done in the next year, and that at, at that time, after the work is done, and we will begin, as, as you vote, you divide, you will pay the proportion part for 10 years till full months paid. And I believe the statute already says what you, I mean, you can lay on the property, they don't pay the, they don't pay bills, so there's, there is a process for if they don't, if they do not follow.
So what's the timeline on getting this road done? Do we know?
Well, we're, we're just waiting to hear from y'all, so we're, we're ready to go.
You're ready to go, so how long you think it'll take?
It's gonna probably, possibly two months.
Oh, okay.
Two, three months. This will be open on budgets. We'll get it done whenever we all agree.
So Judge, would it be possible to have the, the work as a standing just agenda item to Commissioners' Court so that we're informed about the work that's being done?
Sure.
And then the process?
Okay.
Whether that ends up being.
Okay. Just your report every month until it's done?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so.
I, can I go ahead and make a motion?
Yes, you sure can.
I move that the Attorney Commissioners' Court approve the election on the Bishop Ranches improvement of their, of the roads projects. And that we approve the improvements on that road and ask our road bridge department to commence.
Could we also add that one, ask the county attorney to send a letter out and update and post it? Promise. Add that into the motion. Round second again. Do we have a motion in a second? All in favor, raise your hand. I'll see if I can thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, number 12, Fire Station number three, approval of an untracked general contractor. A to consider an act of employment for the C I B commercial industrial builders as general contractor for Fire Station number three project and the written contract with that project.
I'm good with that. And we went out for bids, purchasing department put out bids for two requests for the building, received back bids from four contractors, all good contractors. The committee met, we graded the bids based on the system that was in the bid package, hope that we do it. We arrived with C I B being the contractor that we, that received the highest grade under the process. We chose the lowest cost options, which was also C I B under their proposals. We chose to complete building and then for the parking lot area, we're going to have road bridge, do seal coat for the parking lot so that remove cost from the building and the county took it back over. The total bid under that, and we also, they had, we had an option on there about sports flooring in the fitness area, padded floor, like you find in a gym. They betted at no cost, so of course, we took that. The total bid came back from them to be $1,682,527. That is higher than our O P C was. We worked on the budget on our grocery list to adjust to meet the budget and presented that to the committee. When we presented that to the committee, it was felt, we left out, we had to leave out two large items, the S C D A compressor, which is a necessary item for us, and the radio tower to do the internet service connectivity back to the Santa Fe building through it. It was felt that those were two items that were too large to leave off the grocery list. Our plan, my plan to bid as we worked on that list, is that if we had contingency money left, we would use the contingency money. But Carrie felt that it was too much money, that those are two items that were too important to put on that. So she suggested that we request additional funds to include them on the project from the beginning.
Did we not specifically talk about the IT tower after? Did y'all talk about this?
Yes, ma'am, we did. It was on, it was on the grocery, we did. It was on the grocery list, but we made, when the bids came in, they were high enough that we had to take those two large items out to be able to meet the budget at one point.
At one point, I thought the court reached.
What the court approved on, on the budget. Said we made adjustments.
Back in.
And Carrie felt that we ought to put that back in. At, at, at that time, we had some concerns about taking that in because we wanted to be commissioner of responsibility by the meeting. That I figured not to move, decided to go ahead and do that. But I, for one thing, it's a problem, like, of, of communicating. And the S C D A just goes without, without saying, it's something that they have to have.
And because of the delay of the land, it sits lower, so the tower has to be taller. We talked about that, yeah. We have to do that.
And I don't disagree with Carrie. We made the changes we did and none of us wanted to take either one of them out. But Carrie felt that those two items are too important to depend on having contingency money left to be able to do it out of those.
So we're now over $2 million on the project, is that what you're telling me?
Right. We're, we're at one.
Always happens, unfortunately, this is a theme, and it's just heartbeat, not the project. I mean, I certainly recognize and can appreciate how you've been vetting it, but.
But one thing about it, in, in the effort, certainly, to get those numbers down, considering the account, but after we know that it's done, we've got first class.
Yeah, two stories with an elevator. Absolutely, I'd say that's first class, a $2 million ticket, so it's just, it's unfortunate. I, I can recognize.
So what's presented to you is the motions to address both items as, as well as the funding and give you a total projected cost.
Okay, so I need a motion on both A and B. Is that right, Mike?
Oh, we have the handouts kind of giving you.
Okay.
The funds, that additional 86,000. We have $126,000 in our capital project fund that's not allocated anywhere. That's where I'm reckoning that money come from. The capital projects, which is where the fire station is budgeted.
The paperwork that I, you just got that on that, on the motion. I move that we approve the construction contract with Parkland Fire Station number three to the lowest bid in the highest ranked bidder, commercial and industrial builders, C I B, including the base bid, alternate number two. That bid total is $1,682,527. Second. And the grocery list? Two at one at a time.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Close.
I make a motion to approve of the current grocery list value at $255,012 and add grocery list items category two, item number 14, IT, that's data, tower, and add accessories valued at $44,000. And category three, item 10, S C D A compressor valued at $42,000, with the highest grocery list total value at $341,312, with the additional funding to come from capital projects.
Okay.
Just second to that.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Close.
Okay.
I will just say thank you from myself and Richard and from all of the fire department and volunteers for the commissioners and the tremendous support on this project and to everybody else that's worked for, for this zone. It's been very important to us.
I'll bet you know where we go from here.
As of today, I'll be working with the purchasing department to get the requisition issued in order to get a purchase order issued to C I B today. We'll start a 10-day count between now and the second Friday, from this coming Friday. They will have 10 days to, to agree to the contract, to sign it and to turn it in. A week after next, we'll be holding a pre-construction meeting on site with all, with the general and all subcontractors. That meeting will be held in the Santa Fe auditorium due to the size of it. Once, once the purchasing department receives all the insurance documentation, at that point, their notice to proceed will be given, and that's when the actual count of their days on the project starts. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, number 13, Fire Rescue, to consider an act upon various grants and donations. A to recognize a grant in Texas A and M for a service for rescue from the town and get $10,000 matching fund coming from the current budget. We'll discuss this one at a time, or should we?
Either way.
Okay, let's just do A first. Okay.
Um, A is plan, we've had in for a couple of years now for rescue equipment. We have the money budgeted this year. We talked about that, our capital equipment, that is a grant match for it. And we were hoping to get this grant, so we were prepared for it. And I think we just need to recognize that.
Chief, what are some examples of some of the equipment that you buy from this grant?
Most of the time, what we buy is going to be extrication equipment. They're, they send you a list of qualifying things, and that pertains to jaws of life, rescue struts, airbags, shoring, equipment, and things along, along those lines.
And how many years have we received this grant?
I think this is the second time we've received this, and second or third time in the last 15 years.
So we have managing funds?
Yes, we have a managing funds budget in order.
Okay. Good. Okay, I need a motion for that. I just need to recognize that in this group. So recognize that. B, authorized acceptance of a grant from the Texas A and M for a service for $200,000 for a large brush truck and appropriate, additional, appropriate additional funds necessary to purchase the truck.
This one gets a little tricky. We've been trying to get this grant for about 15 years now. In 2006, we were up for approval and they came in and did the evaluation on our equipment and told us we met protocol for an emergency grant to replace a truck that had been damaged in a fire. So we accepted that grant, knowing or being told that it would not affect the grant that we had in for the large brush truck. Well, after we approved for the grant, we got a letter from the state basically saying that since we did accept the emergency grant, we have to forfeit our grant for the large brush truck. So what we had to do is basically resubmit the grant at that time. And we were just notified a few weeks ago that we had finally received this grant. So this has been a long time of waiting. And when we went through budget process this year, we did not budget any money for fire apparatus. So what we have done is, I've already talked to the Rosenbauer company and there's a demo truck going through. It'll come up later in the budget that we have gone in and cut everything we can off of it to get that price down. We don't have any money to match for this grant. We did get a donation from Emerald Cotton Warehouse. And if anybody remembers, in January of last year, we had a fire that started on Thursday evening. And our guys, being volunteers, did not go home until Monday morning. That was quite tricky to schedule people to work 24 hours a day for five days in a row. And the cotton company took that into consideration and they donated us a pretty healthy donation of $15,000. As a department, we would like to put that money towards the grant match for the truck. And that leaves us some more money we got to come up with, so.
How much?
Well, the, the grant is for $200,000. I have gone through, like I said, we've gone through and pretty much taken everything we can out to give us the number where we need to be. And the total number is 258,754. And I didn't break my math, so.
So you'd make $43,000.
Roughly, you have the $15,000. If we put that donation towards it, we'll need $43,000 to finish off this grant and get a new truck this year.
Carrie, do we have the money somewhere like that?
Contingency.
Contingency fund.
I want to see, yeah, contingency fund. Give them back.
Well, that, we have three for three, I'm sorry. Okay, we need $7,000.
And one thing we start in mind, one thing we keep in mind is we're ordering the truck as soon as we can, but we will still be looking at June before the money is due to be paid out, because that's when we're expecting delivery, is May, June next year, May or June.
Certainly, a needed, certain item, one that I think we probably count forward to let pass by, so.
And there's $90 in your current budget, that you could offset that another 15. I'm, I'm obviously sensitive with the contingency, and we're 26 days into our new budget cycle, so.
We cut everything we could this year. We cut a lot of things we couldn't this year, just to be here. We've cut medical expense, we've cut everything. I don't have any, I don't have any legal room. That's, and that's what we looked at. And, you know, we had plans for that donation money when we got it, but when we got the grant for the truck, I think it's best that we put everything we can towards it, and that's all we have.
Is this scary?
We still have $40,000 left in the capital project. After you take out the 86, that leaves you with no spare money, then your capital projects, if one of the software projects goes over budget, you won't have to be there to cover it. But if you took that $40,000 and then lay on the agenda, you'll, and not truck the can under budget, you can take that and cover it.
And Carrie, what is your opinion on that capital project, so we've not really had anything left for the whole entire fiscal year?
Well, it really hasn't been intended to have a unbalanced movement of the efficiency of projects. It's just knowing that we need to run into issue with the capital projects.
How much in your budget was that?
About $7,000.
Seven?
And that will be addressed at the 25.
Yeah, I need to watch the contingency.
We have to do, we have to, again, just say no. You have to, you have to.
I was going to say, it's, you know, it's one of those things that these grants don't come around very often, so we need to seize the opportunity for sure.
Okay. Make a motion.
I think motion to accept the grant from the Texas A and M for a service for $200,000 for a large brush trucks and incorporate the additional funds to, what is that total?
Forty.
Forty-three, seven.
Forty-three, seven, $754 from my contingency. We've covered the remaining costs.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. And see, we've already recognized that donation, so thank you for that. And the budget adjustments, is there, I think we just did that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, number 14, Interlocal Agreement, City of Memorial and Law Land Area, to consider an act upon improvement of the area of the City of Memorial to establish a capital law under that they're all public.
This is a, you should have it back in the draft, this is a agreement that was drafted up in our office and we can send it up. The city, the city attorney made a couple of suggestions very minor. And, and so I don't know that the city has approved it yet, but that's, that's the language we're overcoming for it. So I'm going to just try to take away that. And so we're basically waiting, the city, assuming you approve this, we're waiting on the state.
Okay, so the city, we, we pay for the subscriptions. The city provides the computers. So my question, this will come up, I think, in the next, I don't remember what it was, but Sandra, then Rhonda, when she came to work for you, did she bring her computer with her, or did you have one for her? So I think that the two computers that the two girls had are there for the CPS attorney or judge. So we don't need to purchase. So we don't need to purchase anymore, so we can give these to, to the city, I mean, no, city's doing that. We can give these to, to the Judge Porter, like we requested, for the. Or that, they call it, uh, what do they call it, Randall, the attorney lounge? Really? Your attorney lounge, okay, so.
It's not our lounge, I'll tell you that.
So our, my question to that then is, do we supply them, do we add a user onto these computers that we're gonna give them to, for the attorneys to?
I, I don't even know if we can do that, but to be honest with you, I would, I would use them, so.
I'm gonna find out, let me know.
Judge, are you ready for motion, I guess?
I am ready for motion. I make a motion that we approve the agreement with the City of Amarillo to establish the county law library at the Amarillo Public Library.
Great.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Five, zero. Is that your Mr. Bond on the side, give me your voice, oh, it's your church, sorry. Okay, number fifteen, which was passed from last time, the justice statue, consider an act upon placing the late, the statue of Lady Justice currently located in the old law library space in the different direction. Um, the dictators could, they're searching by channel fur. She came up with some information on this, this was originally put on the agenda November twenty-seventh, two thousand six, and there was no action taken. And then they got a letter, we got a letter of recommendation from Mike, talking about how much the, uh, statue was actually worth, it's worth twenty million dollars. It was indeed donated by Jim Durham, he wanted it to be here. And so it was back on the agenda again in December, uh, two thousand seven. And it was passed, it was, uh, approved, about five percent of the vote, that we take that as a, as a donation from Jim Durham. And I, for one, think it still needs to stay in this, in the courts building somewhere. Um, Kurt, Kobe Pearl came and talked to me, 'cause he has purchased Jim Durham's office and he thought he could get it back. And I think what this, this said, it's pretty much belongs to him. So we'll just all stall on that, anyway. Good? And my only question is where would we put it? We can't leave it in the CPS court, 'cause it will be, there will be children in that one question. So maybe in the.
Could we put it in the, uh, sorry, I was saying, in her vault, in the basement? I mean, until we give our key to it, we'll start.
And I need to. I was thinking, uh, the jury room, perhaps? In there, uh, 'cause there's enough children in there that hang on it, hang on the scales.
Caroline, no.
Yeah, look at your office, is that, okay, is it, either that or just in the, in the foyer of the district courthouse, probably, for now? Jury room? Okay.
Just let us know when you.
Okay, it's pretty heavy, though.
Do you need that in the motion, Kate?
Right, yes, please.
I make a motion that we approve placing the statue of Lady Justice currently located at the old law library space to the jury room.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Out, zero, thank you. Okay, number sixteen. Uh, law librarian, associate judge, computers employed, and authorized relocation through computers from the law library to the attorney lounge and court building. So we're still needing to look at the legality of that, or if it's possible that we do that.
Carrie, Carrie Lee has talked about it, she just told me, all that, all that she told.
I'll be contacting the people with Westlaw, and I said if they want, uh, one of these licenses, that they can put the Westlaw product on there, I have not talked to the license next, but I'm assuming that we can do that. If they even want, um, or if y'all want to apply access to the, you know, research. I would know that they could place it.
These are for the defense lawyers, so if this one.
I'm really not sure this request, and so I'm still not.
All of those adjustors sent me an email saying, can we get those two, those two, um, sent to the lounge? I didn't know we had a lounge, so.
We have no idea who's gonna use them, we don't, I don't know what these.
They're gonna secure the lounge.
Where is the lounge?
Uh, well, we're, we're the grand, uh, grand jury.
Oh, okay.
We're tons of happy hour.
Well, let's, let's, uh, we'll pass that, tell I can get more information from the district judges on that. Um, and then we don't need, I just don't think we need three computers from CPS attorney, I think, I think we're gonna define what they've got. She's bringing her own, uh, furniture. So the only problem, the only problem, the only concern I have with the CPS court is that we were asked solely to provide space. So far, it's cost us twenty-seven thousand dollars to provide that space. And, uh, Mike has the grocery list attached here, y'all can look at it.
Another unfunded.
Another unfunded, yeah.
Asked thirty thousand.
Thirty, oh, okay.
Now, I will say there, I, I believe there is sort of an obligation, remember, the statue, right, right equipment, that it's, but it is true that we didn't, we were not told.
We were told, uh, specifically to give the space, that they would, um, they would hire the judge, she would bring her, or he or she would bring her own assistant, in that, um, we could borrow the district judge's, um, they. So the judge, they wanted, uh, want some, some changes made in the law library to, um, and I, I see why she would want to change. All glass, she doesn't move the glass up, see if I can look at her, or see her in her office, and that's understandable, so. We're having, redoing all that for her, and we're gonna have a bench built, uh, with.
TDC.
TDC. Anyway, it's costly, so. Well, but it is. Carrie, you have a specific budget that we'd make and pull out of it.
Three thousand dollars for operating expenses, as was requested originally. Um, I briefly spoke today, there is a child abuse prevention fund that we have approximately eighteen thousand dollars in that we have never used. If the court determines that this is a program that would help prevent child abuse, other than that, contingency.
When did we ever say no, Judge?
I don't know.
When did we ever say, we don't, there's not money, it wasn't budgeted.
But it did wrong, wrong rights, it'll be the district, of course, with their caseload, and it's allowing them to not have to deal with this. I know it sounds.
So could we say we have eighteen thousand? What can you do with eighteen thousand and let them bet it? Instead of it always falling on the court, I mean, we say, what's your wish list, and they give us their wish list, as they should. I mean, can we not reverse that conversation and say, here's some money, we have this budget here? What's the most critical to address?
Well, on this particular item, the, uh, the, what you said earlier, Dave, about the equipment, the equipment's there. They've got computers, they've got copy machine, they have scanner, they have everything they need, except the, it's actually the rebuilding of the room. And they're, we're having to purchase seventy chairs for the audience, because they have a huge number of people that turn up in these cases.
So, so that money that you quoted, Mike, uh, currently at, uh, the rejected, is at thirty, and that we're still waiting on final cost coming from TDCJ and Palmer, and on the list that you have for you, I can tell you right now that item three's already been started, and the room has been demoed out, we're just waiting to refinish her office to put it back. If you had to wait, and I'm just putting this out there as consideration, item one was there for privacy, uh, due to noise and stuff like that. Item two, uh, our department's taking care of that, item three, you need to really finish that in order to give her a room to put back. Item four was to establish three pieces of millwork from TDCJ. Item five, uh, was something that Jason and I discussed about a sound system, if it's even needed. Gallery seating was seventy, and we worked through purchasing in order to obtain these costs. Uh, item seven, we're taking out our attic stock, so. Um, critical item, I would say would probably be number four, number two at this point here, if you had to move forth. And then, you know, making store front the doors, if you had to wait till later to do it, that was just more.
She's in there right now, and she, and she.
I'm not for sure she moved in, that's right. She's supposed to be in there by mid-month.
Judge, I failed to mention, we gave budget seven thousand dollars for furniture during the budget.
During the budget, yeah.
The original.
Okay, so that, that.
So you have seven thousand and eighteen.
That's close. Well, I am calling the, uh, the associate judge and asking him if they could, if the state could get some money for this. She's willing to ask me, and I'll see if he can say yes.
Steve is gonna say no.
The lead time on building storefronts, at least six to eight weeks once you order, just to get it on site, and the TDC, TDCJ beach is at six months.
Law level two, and the reason we're gonna, we're gonna do her office is for her own safety. I mean, there's some safety concerns there, so, um, I can't fault her for that, for her own safety, so. Okay, so what do we have on?
So adding up the dollars, where are we, we had eighteen plus seven, that was, I thought, another three.
I have pretty much the original budget for operations.
Actual, uh, uh, cost of funds we have, so eighteen plus seven.
Mike, um, I have a question on the millwork, and this may be a dumb question, so forgive me. But if we are, uh, building, kind of customizing for that space, the millwork, and that future may change for the district court building, is there anything we could use as a happy medium? Because often what we find is then when there's a new location, it doesn't fit right, the dimensions aren't right, those kind of things.
That is one thing to take into consideration, this is portable furniture, you can move it anywhere, it's just like judge forms, uh, except not as grand of a scale. Uh, we could utilize it anywhere, the only other thing that we have is we have some historic, uh, benches left over from this project, Julie and him had them, I think, on their, period Santa Fe building. Uh, we've got three of them. Uh, to put within the room, you can always put a skirt around the table for the judge, ever said it, for privacy. I mean, there's things that can be done, it's just, our young officers are seeing.
I think if we have those type of, um, equipment, if you will, available, I mean, I, I personally feel like it goes a long way. I mean, we're trying to work with them, we're trying to do what we can, even as it relates to the computers, um.
The millwork cost, uh, well, we had got from the regional contractor was in excess of twenty thousand dollars, so this right here was the best option to go with.
See a look like this? Do we, uh, do we have any extra chairs anywhere that we can rent for this? Probably not, no, too much.
So what if we were, I mean, even with the judge, to kind of just bet out what is being discussed at the court level before we take any formal action, I mean, I kind of feel like we might need.
I think, I think we need to pass this whole thing right now, till we not have more information, till I talk to the judges and the teams. Also to Carrie, someone, Carrie, uh, Baker, yeah. Uh, is that all right, we just pass this till next time, and we'll see. We have more information. Okay, thank you, number seventeen, Santa Fe building, have a toy on policy for outside of it. Consider an act upon adopting the policy procedure for reading the same policy for outside agents. Dave, you know, I know you don't have it ready.
No, uh, and I, I kind of started, I, I'm looking at the government policy, and I was kind of working with that, and I actually kind of liked the, the outline, and I can pass, pass grant for that, just to, I'll pick that up, but, uh, it's pretty, uh, insurance, I mean, there's decisions you uh, will have to make as the court, but I, I mean, the policy, I'll be able to, that would be pretty easy to come up with.
Now, in the past, from, from looking at those emails, Mike, I'll get you soon, in the past, the county bought the insurance. You know, we had a policy in our rent, and we just made the renters pay a fee, okay, for, does this, did you say that too? Or we didn't? 'Cause it looked extremely high to me.
The contract that Dave is speaking of, just to rework what we currently have, this is not more than a recommendation from our insurance company, uh, Stephen, Stephen, or to put that into. And so y'all, are y'all liking the Stephen?
And how much would that have been, uh, to them, do you remember?
You, given, you have the copy of the draft, of what some of the other counties, or some of the.
I have it. It just, I read over it, it seemed really, really high.
The fee that we'd originally had requested is what we established back in two thousand, whenever we worked with the City of Amarillo, based off of the square footage, and number of people, what makes them maintain. So the fee for leasing it, I think it was within the ballpark, uh. It was a huge expense.
But I would say, Judge, that's typically a standard when you're renting, is that whoever is offering that can take on the insurance and you just pay, or they have an option of going out to get their own, um, but that's.
Yeah, that's.
General liability, uh, for special events, which is coverage for a million dollars, alcohol, a million dollars, normal type of coverage.
So what would be the, uh, the one night charge for a party? As, you know, if you don't have that.
I, I have to look back at all these, uh, to see what.
My office was doing that, it, it was somewhere between twelve and fourteen hundred dollars. And I think that's a lot, for one, for one event, I'm just saying, I don't wanna go above that, that's for sure. 'Cause who, who knows gonna rent it out?
You.
Like you said.
Does policy have anything about security? They, they, it was, when you had established, uh, they, you don't mind, the policy y'all approved for the usage of the courthouse and the grounds, it's the same type of policy, anyone requesting to utilize the Santa Fe building would approach twenty-two court members as their sponsor. If you say no, then they go find another person, but that, or one of y'all would present it to the commissioner's court. Uh, it also addressed security within their, Dave is gonna re, rewrite the usage policy in the contract. Some of the biggest issues that we had in the building, of course, was, uh, the security was there. You know, at that time, what y'all had required, it's a big building, we had a lot of problems within the building. I think that can be addressed, and the sheriff, he recommended, I think, a minimum of three, uh, four, four people throughout the building, and I think that's, that's good. Uh, before you start renting this auditorium out, I ask that you please understand something I presented within those emails. We did not put within the budget, you notice the floor you have there around the, surrounding areas up around the auditorium, we need to fix that floor. We can, it's safe to walk on, but somewhere in the near future, y'all need to allow us to address that. One of the biggest changes on the auditorium was the occupancy levels within these areas. I have worked with the City of Amarillo. Uh, this was a big problem the early years passed, was no matter what we said, the people renting it would just load it up however they wanted to. While we called the east party room, the area on the east side of the building, the yacht, new occupancy level per fire code is forty-nine people. That's with tables in there, because there's only one proper fire address out of the area. Your auditorium was originally a little over five hundred standing room only. It has currently been reduced to two hundred and forty-eight people, thirty tables maximum. So I'm just making y'all aware of that, whenever y'all speak to people about leasing this out, the type of events they have.
And Mike, is it necessary that, um, someone has a sponsor? I mean, I would just think if we are renting it, they would go through the judge's office and rent it. Like, I don't know if that's an unnecessary step, I'm just thinking through that a little bit.
They would typically call my office and want it on the agenda.
I mean, it's up to y'all.
It could go that way, but I, that's what I would like to do today. Let's pass this, and I wanna make it you, and Dave, and Leanne, and consider this, and get, get something we can come up with and agree to, and then bring it back. Because Leanne needs to be in it, becomes her office.
Receiving call.
You're receiving calls.
We are already receiving.
Yeah. So let's, can we do that, is that all right, everybody? Let's pass that for two more weeks, and get together, uh, at that two week time, and see what we can come up with.
In the, in the policy, two thousand, he has line scale, the cost based on how many people, and it would. In the, in the policy, two thousand, he has line scale, a cost based on how many people, and it went way over his occupancy.
Yeah.
And, and I think the most it would cost would be two thousand dollars for eight hours, that was for a B. Uh, and so for a type of capacity, we have now, the old policy provided costs about a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
For eight hours.
That was the.
Yeah, so, just weird.
Okay, all right, great. We'll, we'll talk about that in two weeks. Okay, I have a right to an interpreter fee, should be considering invoices for interpreters fees that fall outside of the current payment schedule with a daily amount of excess of one hundred dollars, as required by article thirty-eight point three of code of criminal procedure, and take any action necessary concerning the claims and or schedule. Since we did that in court, I have been contacted by all of the district judges, saying we've lost our minds. And, uh, basically that they will not get to have a trial ever, because the people that they get to translate have to be paying a certain amount per hour. I totally get that. So, uh, in order to keep having trials, we need to.
Do they have, do they have any suggestion about what that is?
They said, they said it needs to be whatever the person presents, because sometimes, there's so many different dialects.
That's how the law provides, and I, so, so I think what you need to do is set it kind of, you know, I mean, we gotta follow whatever the law says, but I, I, and I, and I think, I think they're right. When it, when it's passed, I thought, this is not gonna last very long. Because I think, you know, but I mean, I think there's several things we can do to, uh, like, I don't think, I don't think anyone can make any, like, some of the, some of the minimums were ridiculous for the amount of work. You know, like, three or four hour minimums, I think that's outrageous.
Oh, we do.
Uh, I don't mind paying a reason, I think legally, you pay a reasonable amount per hour, and maybe even certain waiting time that have a, an outrageous, I think maybe unconstitutional. Cause you're paying for work you're not getting. Uh, but, uh, but I do think, but I do think you can possibly set some kind of schedule, so you don't have to bring every one of them back here for your proof. It's, it might be wrong, and judges.
Um, one of, one of the judges calls that they had a trial that was a big, high profile trial, and they had, they had someone that spoke Somali, and and there was no one here that could do it, and they had to get him from California to come and.
I don't see it.
I don't know. I don't know. But anyways, and I, I totally get that. I mean, I'm the one who's in the way of justice, that's for sure.
But that's an outlier, Judge, and so we can't build a policy on an outlier. I think for the most part, what I hear Dave saying is, fine, set a threshold that will accommodate a lot of what we're seeing, but you can't limit it to an unlimited amount.
And I, I don't, you know, like, in that case, the Somali, I mean, I mean, think you can, you, I have no problem with paying expenses, I think the statute may even say that. But I, you know, if it's over the, they pay, the interpretation, expenses are what they are, I think, as long as, as long as they're legitimate expenses. I don't, I don't, I think, that's not, I'm not concerned about that. I don't think you have to bring that back. So, uh, specifically, did I give any indicator of?
They just said that they typically had a lot of trials where they had to have interpreter for the defendant, as well as witness, and then it adds up. And, and I can see that, that they would, they would do that, and they, they, by the, for their hours. Cause they were doing both, you know, so, but then you have two interpreters, so, um, I don't know.
Well, I would like to point out that, uh, invoices that I laid out for this point, this is a three hour minimum that they have up to one hundred and five hours an hour, and if you can come by the end, we have no idea how much time they spent. And, and this is the type of bill.
So this first one, looking at, the time of arrival is nine thirty, and the time of departure, nine fifty-four. And it's, uh, two hundred and sixty bucks, but. Who else is that?
It's a two hour minimum. Well, the one that, um, that commissioner is referencing, this other attachment was in the fact, that was a two hour minimum, and the one Carrie presented was a three hour minimum.
Let me call the county and district attorney. What do y'all, what is your, uh, take on this? You guys are the ones flying the cases. What do you think?
I'll take some of the wrong line of work.
That was our consensus for a twenty minutes' worth of work, two hundred and sixty-four bucks.
Yeah, I, I think, I think from our perspective, um, the problem is these outlier cases. I mean, the, the vast majority of cases where we need an interpreter, they're all Spanish. And so that's really not an issue. There are plenty of Spanish interpreters, and we're trying to find more of them. But when we need somebody who speaks a dialect of Burmese, for example, that's been the one that I can recall having had an issue with more than once. Um, those are fine, they're really hard to find, and so we're kind of at the mercy of the marketplace. Uh, you know, that, that they're telling, be, well, you pay us this, or we're not gonna interpret for you. We have to have the interpreter, so, I, I agree with everything Dave said, and all of the concerns expressed here. I'm not sure what the practical solution is, other than to see if maybe, that wouldn't make sense, uh, to see if maybe, uh, there's a possibility of trying to contract with some folks, and, and through a contract, trying to limit expenses. That way, we come to an understanding beforehand, before they come into court, you know, look, you'll be paid a minimum of this, but if you're gonna try to bill for more than that, you're gonna have to come justify it, and maybe even say, if it's gonna go, maybe amend our schedule, say, if you're gonna try to bill for open schedule, you're gonna come to the commissioner's court and justify that overage to the court.
Well, and Scott, even to kind of take that conversation a step further, if we try to, um, address a policy around even Spanish, roughly, I know it's throughout eighty percent, maybe, and I don't know if that's accurate or not, but just eighty percent of what you might need out there is, um, Spanish, and then having room for these outliers. Cause the invoice that Carrie provided, um, that's, that was the trans, that was the language, it was Spanish, and so there's a minimal. So maybe we can't get to the whole issue, but we could get to the biggest part of the issue, if we could standardize the pricing with a, a contract of some type with Spanish, um, interpreters. And then having room, and I think that, I would imagine that's really the judge's room, issue, is room for these other dialects. And, um, and having the flexibility to do that.
Right, cause again, I mean, quite frankly, as I stand here today, I couldn't even tell you what's the market rate for some of these wild dialects, off, off, uh, off culture dialects might be.
But it'd be interesting to, I'd be interested to know what others are doing. I'm sure our school districts are having a similar issue. I'm sure our hospitals are having a similar issue. So what is the policy they have in place to help offset that?
Yeah, of course, most of them, yeah, different purposes, probably the same problem, that, that they may have to, as an accommodation, I'd just say the school district are titled nine, in terms of communicating with parents, uh, they may have to have a, an interpreter. The added wrinkle is, if we're gonna go to court, they're gonna have to be certified, uh, in order to, to, to adequately protect our records, so, uh, it, it's worth a conversation with other entities, I think, to try and come up with that, I think. Uh, you know, I, whatever happens to this particular, this particular plan, uh, is, is in your discretion, but I do think maybe some discussion with not only other entities, but also maybe even trying to solicit some folks who might want to contract with us, so that we can have a, uh, a preemptive sort of discussion about limiting expenses, uh, and trying to avoid being victims of, of, of the whims of market.
So Carrie, these two that we have in front of us here for integrity translation. So are we, are we, do you want our people to pay this one and the other one? That's in the bank.
We want to let it go through like that, and then we have the two from Clear Learn, and I'm gonna tell you, one of the interpreters from Clear Learn, he had to come up here for a full day, and he was having to think of this regular job, and they, you'll have to pay him eight hours because he's traveling time. The inmate's been in jail for two and a half years, and he's approved, completely, eight hours. So, uh, I'm doing this here.
But on the invoice, it is noted that it's a rare dialect, so we don't expect this to happen often, but you're saying that you accommodate and be prepared for that. And I, I feel like that's probably the judge's concern, is having the flexibility to know that they have the support of the court to do that, and make sense for the judge.
Probably do support that. Do we do it one, hey, so?
This one, and you got, you have a word?
Yeah, I just.
The areas that you would like, first will come off from this regular job to find an employee to display, so we can do this.
We're just.
Can you talk here, this one, I love this, I'm lost.
They make a hundred and thirty dollars an hour in the trailer jail.
So, again, do we need to approve these today?
It's your choice if you want to pay as the president or.
In this case, uh, we would not be providing, uh, for, for the, for.
Well, we would pay the airfare enough here, and should it go over, I think, yes, we have to pay the. And is that our, our question, or here's what I would like?
Okay, so we would be paying for airfare, plus.
Community has not been discussed. I don't know if they will replace that, but they expect to get it done within the day.
This is a two hundred and eighty-five dollar bill here, that, uh, do we have any timeframe on that one? I'd like to see what, how much time is left.
They never included, but Dave and I were just discussing, I will require for a process that we have time in and time out.
Thank you.
Y'all wanna approve these to be paid by this time?
I don't wanna pay him, but, uh, I think we have to pay our bills. So I'm gonna re-pay this interpretive, interpretation that has, has presented. I should go like, I'd like to have, make a comment about the way it was brought to us initially. It puts us in a real embarrassing spot now, to be hammered by the district judges. When all the information was given that day, when we made that decision, was that was appropriate, what we were doing? And, uh, tend to be told we were, we must be crazy, that's, uh, that's kind of hard to swallow. I wish they'd come and plead your case to us.
Okay, I have a motion on the second. Okay, I have a motion and signal, Baker is ready. All opposed. Four one. Okay, number nineteen, interlocal agreement, Armstrong County, the district center to consider an act of one, bringing these are local agreement with Armstrong County, going to Armstrong County Jail inmates. Sheriff, how many do they have today? One, two?
Maybe, uh, two. Uh, they're gonna, they're approached to, uh, of housing, they're gonna make another, they're working on the interlocal agreement. We haven't had a test to finish that yet, so we might want to.
I think it's, I think it's in pretty good shape now. All I need to do is add, kind of, a tweet he does suggest to make sure they're in charge of doing their own tracking of EPS, but, so.
They're doing all the, all the inter, inter things, they'll have, uh, they'll, they'll pay sixty-five dollars per day, hurting money. Uh, they're responsible for all their medical costs and those kind of things, and if they have one that is gonna be in the hospital over eight hours, then they have to come up and sit with them, so we don't have to. Initially, we'll have to, because they don't work twenty-four seven, they, they go home at ten, so when, over that, their guys go home with their own calls, so we would give them time to, to get over to the hospital, and then they take over us. They used to, whereas we would be using our, if we have to stay over, we include that, and they'll pay that as a overtime rate as well.
Okay, so Dave, is that ready to sign today?
Not quite, but I just need to, I, I can add that through quickly.
Their jails are probably not gonna ask you.
Sheriff, what, um, will you remind me of our rate that we pay to children when we?
It's gone to forty dollars, they have forty. Sixty-five is pretty reasonable, I think. Random charges is sixty-five, sixty-five or sixty-eight, I think.
Can we go ahead and prove this up?
I think we can with the, yeah, with the understanding that I'll get that later today or tomorrow, or.
Essentially, we tried to set it up so that literally all we're doing is speaking to the prison floor. And, I mean, there are, any other responsibilities not attached to that, they've agreed to go.
So we're just providing space.
Yes.
No computers.
Right.
We change to two days.
Whenever they're ready to be released, they will come get them. I know that, uh, we approved an interlocal agreement, Armstrong County, to hold Armstrong County jail, it is.
Second rule. Could we have a motion and a second?
And then the rate, the charging on that.
It's in the, it's in the contract. You want to put it on the motion? Sixty-five, yes, sure, okay. I go over sixty-five dollars a day, okay.
Second.
I already, I already have a second. Time to stay up with me. Okay, so wait a minute, are y'all trying to put the amount in the motion?
I made it to, to add the, uh, the amount of sixty-five.
Now, second, and again, all in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero. Uh, number twenty, November twenty fifteen is Texas Home Care Hospice Month. I got a letter from, I don't, I don't know if I do this right, I don't remember. The point is to pass this proclamation, and there's no need to vote on it, it's just a proclamation, recognize the November, there's the, on our home health care and hospice month, so we'll sign this and get it done, okay? Yes. So, so, next. And number twenty-one, fire counting projects, don't get me going along there. Number twenty-two, vehicle inventory, to consider an act of one, adding in two thousand five Ford Expedition. Harder counting number one, six, nine, one, seven, to the district attorney to be able to inventory without requiring them to turn in a replacement vehicle. This would increase the plate size by one vehicle. Just those things.
Good, good morning. I want to start out by thanking y'all for the lots of work you're doing. Um, once again, every time I walk out in the dark, I get a great appreciation for y'all being able to do that for us. Um, this involves, you know, we added the one investigator on the switch about four months ago, three, three months ago, a time plus when you're having fun.
Yeah.
And so we added an investigator staff, and probably the biggest job that investigators do for us is serve our subpoenas. So, we're wanting to add one vehicle, um, because of the, the new investigator we got, and so put him in a position to help do that also, and then, uh, it's a vehicle, it's from a, we haven't bought any new vehicles, or even used vehicles. The stuff that we're getting is stuff that's gonna be on the auction block. Um, this veh, this particular vehicle was from the sheriff's department, I think it's got a hundred and thirty-three thousand miles on it, which is the most we've ever had on a vehicle, and unfortunately, we don't know what the total history is of the vehicle, because they deleted it. You know, before the vehicle was gotten rid of, so we're not sure what the hell we do with. So, um, in addition to, I think needing one because we've got an extra investigator now. I think also, if this thing tanks, and we give up a vehicle, then we're gonna be short of vehicles. We'd be one less important than normally it has in the past, which will cause us great difficulty. So that's the reason I'm interacting for, as I said, it's, it's, we've been on the auction block, and we, we try to do the best our due diligence on people that have driven it, and the best we could find out, and I think it was from Chief Ditto, it was, uh, excuse me. Chief Johnson, I'm sorry, he's always, he's always Ditto to me. I'm rambling, he always Ditto to me. Uh, uh, it's, uh, um, anyway, uh, sorry about that. Um, is that it was used by, or, um, people out of the jail coming back and forth, probably the last two years, and it hasn't been one. One user of vehicle, there've been various different people that have used it, and, uh, so as far as getting around town, at least, we figured we're gonna be, hopefully be safe by trying to get to that vehicle.
Randall, um, so I don't think it'll tank. I think this will be successful, cause I know that you guys would have bet a time, um, to, to undertake in this initiative, if it's gonna be successful. So I have, I have all faith in that. Uh, when we talked about moving over this investigator, um, I'm surprised that there wasn't thought.
So I have, I have all faith in that. Uh, when we talked about moving over this investigator, um, I'm surprised that there wasn't thought at that time about a vehicle. So I, unfortunately, what I sometimes feel, whether it's true or not, we get things in pieces. And so we get enough to where you, I feel like there's comfort level and then, oh, by the way, you know, oh, by the way. So I'm just, that's the framework of my thinking, um, so I'm just interested.
And I'll be very frank with you. Didn't even think about it. And usually the time we start thinking about vehicles, is when the stuff comes up and it's going to a toxin block. It's when our, my chief investigator takes care of all that. And that's when vehicles come to mind. And when we added it, I didn't even think about it. And then there was a time period between adding the slot and when we actually got somebody in a position. And I just didn't think about it until, um.
And I guess that, uh, that's going to be probably what all the people think about it either, and that's something that probably will be. Now, that it wouldn't be, it's not official, make sure they have that.
I didn't, I just let, I didn't think about it. And, um, now that it's popped up and the vehicle looks in good shape. But, uh, as far as, I think the most we've ever had on one before is ninety-seven thousand, something like that. So I feel like we're branching out there, but apparently the last two years it hasn't been driven daily. You know, the typical deal, and it seems to be getting everybody back and forth from the jail, but I just didn't think about it. That's, that's a flat honest answer.
If, if something goes awry with the vehicle, where is that expense going to come from? Like, do you need repairs of some type?
Well, I think in the past, we've been covering some, I am true to that. If it tanks, I mean, if it's enough that it's not worth fixing the vehicle, we just don't fix it and it goes over to the auction block, so we can get it from the next time.
But if there are repairs needed on the vehicle, you feel like you have enough in your budget to offset that?
We've been, we've been taking care of those.
And same thing for fuel on the vehicle?
You guys thirty-six hundred dollars budget to those items.
And then the insurance for us to add another vehicle to the fleet, what is that impact?
Just reviving.
I think it just kind of goes in. Yes, it's not, it's been.
But it's already entered?
Yes, because it's still on our, on our chart at this point. Yeah, because they've been, they've been using it drop back and forth from the center of the year. I, uh, move that we add a two thousand five Ford Expedition, C number one six nine one seven, district attorney's vehicle inventory without requiring them to turn in a replacement vehicle.
I'm sorry, I was just going to, Commissioner, can you add for the investigator position that was moved over, just so the motion reflects it was a new position? And I, maybe I'm not stating the title correctly, so please keep me in line.
Right, well, it, it's for the, the vast majority of the time the vehicle's used, ninety-nine point nine some percent of the time are the investigators doing it. Like, say, for example, though, if we have a seminar that's going to be in Lubbock and all the lawyers need to attend. Well, then we'll pile in two vehicles and drop it Lubbock, do things like that. But other than that, it's usually the investigators have it. But it's not, we don't designate to a specific investigator. It's just to the investigators because sometimes the one vehicle's out of service and they'll have to borrow another one and that sort of thing.
Yeah, and I, my only point with adding that, and certainly I can't, I don't want to adjust your motion, but just so that we're reflecting, you have a new investigator in your department that you didn't originally have this time last year.
Correct.
And that's why you're requesting me here.
Yes, ma'am.
If, uh, I have an additional, you want to add that to the, uh, the motion?
Just put at the end for investigator position.
And, uh, assuming you have adding an additional investigator.
Okay, need a second? Okay, I have a motion and second. All in favor, raise your hand. Five to one. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Appreciate y'all.
Twenty-three, equipment purchase to consider next one following A, purchase of a fusion slicer kit from. Did I say that wrong? It's really hard to say fast, so I won't have to attend. From CDWG in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred dollars from the contract, IPA Technology Solutions, one three zero seven three. Plunge motioned in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen budget. Morning.
Good morning. Uh, yeah, we budgeted this back then, you know, starting to put budget together. This piece of equipment lets us slice fiber together. And so the upgrades that we've got from downtown, uh, that's going to be, for the ground problem makes a lot. We're going to save thousands of dollars by being able to do all this by ourselves, just on that first project.
So this is specifically for the redundancy? Your first initiative is for the downtown project, where you use this equipment? Okay.
Jason, so this was budgeted on a thousand, did you pursue sixty thousand savings?
Yes, yeah, we're going to have, yeah, yes.
Is that wrong? Y'all heard it, right here?
Okay. I make a motion to approve the purchase of a fusion slicer kit from CDWG in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred. From the contract, IPA Technology Solutions, one three zero seven three three.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. B is the purchase of two Walker NT twenty-five mowers, rockers lawn bleacher. In the amount of twenty-two thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars with a trade-in value for Potter County number one seven one A, by Potter County number one seven one eight six. Eighty-one hundred dollars for purchased, cost of seventeen thousand one hundred seventy-six dollars, funds posted in twenty sixteen budget.
Same situation as what Jason had. This is two parts that y'all have approved. Nick's done all the legwork on this. He's worked with the profits. Uh, we had value of what you budgeted, getting trade-in, saving money.
Okay, good. I'll hear that. Okay, then, motion and a second?
I move that we approve the purchase of two Walker NTs, dash two-five mowers, rockers lawn bleacher. LTD in around twenty-two thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars with trade-in value. PC number one seven one eight five and PC number one seven one eight six of five thousand one hundred dollars, all in total, purchase price of seventeen thousand one seventy-six dollars.
Ooh, second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Five one, thank you. Number twenty-five. Uh, number twenty-four, formal bid or to consider next one, the one for number one 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 four, dash one five, pest control services to Oregon. Pest control has the lowest responsive bid. Funds budgeted in various accounts for the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen budget year. Anybody want to speak to that? Matt Crennel is our senior buyer and he's been doing the four minutes. Okay, I'm in.
Hi.
How are you?
Good. Um, yes, uh, we received three bids for pest control services. And, um, we evaluated those bids and found Oregon pest control, um, to be the lowest and best responsive bid. With a cost per year approximately, um, twelve point four percent below, um, the next lowest bid that we received. And also, um, Oregon pest control, there, there was a difference of approximately fifteen percent between the Oregon pest control bid that we received. And, um, our cost over the last fiscal year, um, that we paid Ace Pest Control.
That's good. My question is, so we currently use, we use it for a while.
For five years.
Five years?
Yeah.
You said fifteen percent difference in cost.
Between what we paid this last fiscal year and what Oregon, uh, pest control has bid, um, for this next contract period. So that is our recommendation is what, uh, Ace Pest Control to award to Ace Pest, uh, excuse me, to award to Oregon Pest Control. As the lowest and best, uh, responsive.
Okay, mine, thank you.
What is that monetary value of such?
Uh, let's see. Okay, so Ace. Yeah, we paid them over the last fiscal year, twelve thousand ninety-seven dollars and ninety cents. And, uh, Oregon Pest Control has bid ten thousand five hundred sixty dollars.
That was terminated, that, uh, twelve thousand. She's horrible.
But he called him terminated.
Yeah.
And, and Ace has actually did eleven thousand eight seventy-seven.
I'm just one of the departments that utilizes this service here. The sheriff uses it, Rowan Bridge uses it, our department uses it. A problem that I have is what was just mentioned, the lowest and the best. May have been the lowest, but I disagree with the rest, and that's my personal opinion. One time we had Ace Pest Control, we went to Oregon, we wound up back up with Ace Pest Control. The monetary value that Matt had just presented right there, the difference is a little over a thousand dollars. We currently have a contractor that comes out, takes care of our work, spur of the moment, they drop what they're doing, they come out and assist the county on many different occasions at no cost to the county. Uh, is Oregon willing to do that?
Yes, sir.
Sheriff, would you like to say anything? I just.
Are they the ones who take care of the bodies in my office?
Yes, Ace Pest Control. I just hate to see you switch contractors for a value a little over a thousand dollars. It's a contractor that has done great work with Potter County. Uh, I'm not for sure what Nick has spoken to him about, he addressed these issues with Matt. His concern was on the comparison of how Oregon was being compared to Potter County's property utilized in Dale Helicopter. Uh, you know, there's no comparison between the two different, two types of properties. There's a big difference.
The thing with the Ace, we're very fortunate that we have the same person every month. And even though we have to escort them in certain areas, there are, other areas we don't like to escort them. With the little one, if we have a different person every month, or however that's going to work, that's a concern to us. Because I've got to drop somebody from doing their business to go and walk this person around. Because of seat disrequirements and those kind of things, they can't even be in a room with a computer without somebody in there. That's just a concern that we have.
So typically, uh, when we do contract someone for this, do, do we engage the, the users prior to beginning the termination on, uh, or best and, and low bid?
We did, uh, a question was asked if, uh, for example, would, uh, Oregon Pest, Oregon Pest Control, if they were awarded, uh, this contract. Would they, um, make sure that, uh, their employees that come out are, you know, have a background check in place, uh, they pass that background check? And that question was asked and was, was answered that yes, absolutely all, uh, Oregon Pest Control employees have passed that background check. So it, so it's safer that they come to the, to the sheriff's office and spray. And, uh, you know, we, we did check the reference, uh, it was a, it was a glowing reference, uh, the helicopter, never any problems. Uh, invoices are, are always paid on time, uh, service is excellent, cost is very reasonable. So from everything we could see, uh, everything was, was a valid question.
I'd like to ask a question. We were, we were using Ace at one time, then we went to Oregon. What happened that we went back to Ace?
The best I can recall is we had issues with the service. Nick is the one that's in charge of them. He's not here today, obviously. But, uh, we had issues with the service at the time, and that's why we went back to Ace. Normally, a lot of times when the contractors that we have long-term relationships with, they'll come in, they'll get beat out by somebody else, and we have lower price, and we always have issues by going to that level. You know, I disagree with the, in the lowest and best, my convention.
And this contract is only for a year duration, so if we did, um, extend and I, we.
Actually, this was a, this was a three-year.
Three-year contract?
Yeah.
Okay.
December first, twenty fifteen, uh, through November thirty-fourth, November thirty, twenty eighteen.
And we do have someone from Oregon, is that right in the audience today? Um, sir, I'm not sure if you would, if you're willing to speak in terms of the customer service, because I feel like that maybe is the root concern, and you're committed with a potential three-year contract.
Right. Addressing his issue, the people from Oregon, oh, Johnny Weiselman. A, a commercial account rep for Oregon Pest Control. Uh, his issue, the people that were here back when that happened, or I don't know when it was, they're not longer here. And for whatever reason. The same tech will be coming out to Potter County, all the facilities, unless it's, of course, sick or vacation, or you just can't make it that day. But then we step in, we put a service manager in. We don't actually just send another tech that, you know, has no clue. Uh, our service manager will be with the tech through the, uh, initial getting to know the facilities, that kind of thing. So when he needs to step in, he will be, you know, free with the, so. Uh, we do have guarantees that this is in place. Uh, you call us, uh, we respond within two hours, we respond out of the facility at twenty-four.
And if there are escalation issues, whether it's on response time or overall performance, um, would we be working with you directly, Mr. Weiseman? Or how, how does that process work? I'm just kind of thinking.
Either myself or, or, uh, Mr. Blue Spel, which is the, uh, service manager.
You speaking in terms of additional calls?
No, I'm just, I'm just speaking in terms of if we did switch to best and final, and, and certainly, I, I mean, I appreciate being good stewards of the taxpayer dollar. And I understand what you're saying too, Mike, is there's a balance in between. And so I'm just, my question to him is if we have issues, what is the escalation point? Um, and I'm not, I don't have, we didn't have the actual contracting here, so I'm not sure if there's contract language, if there's issues, that we can bring it back to court and address it. If, if there are service issues, I guess, is, because I feel like that's your concern, Mike. I don't want to speak for you, but that's what I'm hearing. In the original contract date, do you know if there's a clause for service issues?
I doubt if there's a real extensive contract like you have for, like, your services. It's usually, usually the bid, in this situation, the bid specifications act as the.
I'm a little concerned with the, uh, being three years. Why do we, uh, contract like that for three years?
Five years ago, we sent out a, a three-year, uh, bid, uh, contract, you know, a bid for, to contract for three years with two one-year options to renew. And so we just want that same model this time.
We adjust to one year? We can, we can adjust. Are we, we're within our realm to adjust the contract to one year? I don't know if that changes the bid process.
I think that might change the, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that changed.
My guess would be that the three years, um, was to, uh, get a contract in place. And see, you know, consistency in place, but I don't know.
And we tried one year at one time. Really, that wasn't fair to the vendors coming out doing work. There was, and that was, we had such a rotating door right there. If we looked at doing a five-year, seven-year, so three-year was kind of a happy meeting, you know, work with, with, with the understanding to be renewed, the option to renew.
So it, it's sort of hypothetically, it's a mechanism, it's a, um, it's bound before the wanted to contract, is there, is that deal was out?
Oh, yeah, I mean, you know, it's, the contracts model, you can always cancel the contract.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I heard on the court that there is this aspect.
I think what Mike is speaking to is loyalty, relationships that you, that you form with people who come to the courthouse and work, and work with you. There's nothing personal, uh, Johnny, nothing personal at all, but, uh, you know, when you got, like, for instance, Ace came out in July and sprayed the yard for the first lunch on the lawn thing, just a couple of mosquitoes everywhere. So they did that for free. They came out spraying and what else. So it's just things like that that, that you depend on throughout the years when you work with someone, calls like that. So that's what, that's why they go to the court.
Well, and I do think it's a balance too, because, um, you want to be competing. I mean, you don't want to just put out a bid for the sake of doing a bid. I mean, you truly want that competition in the market and don't be so used to, um, the relationships. From my perspective, it's real hard to explain to a taxpayer, we have someone that is very comparable, is standing in front of the court, saying they will commit to the same level of service. But because we like the other people, um, that's where we went. So, you know, it's their dollar at the end of the day, and, um, I switch people I work with all the time because they offer me better prices. I mean, it's still like them all at the end of the day. I do that for my car maintenance. I do that for everything, where it's like the best price, but.
So if I'm allowed to, uh, purchasing, this is a recommendation.
Can I say something, Commissioner? That's purchasing's a recommendation. I, the sheriff. That's purchasing's a recommendation. Either the sheriff, fire department, Roden Bridge, we should have recommendations with. I mean, anyone that works with. For us, for purchasing to set standard and say, this is all of our recommendations and.
That's why I asked the question, if, as a whole, did you engage with all the departments that utilize this service to get their point of perspective on the.
We did talk to Captain Coffey, and we did talk to, and didn't see the detention center. And we talked to the riding board in first, I mean, excuse me, in Nichols.
And what was their feedback?
The feedback from the sheriff's office was, sounds good. And both the detention center and Captain Coffey, there was no. I mean, the question did come from the sheriff's office. Will these technicians pass background checks? Will there be any issues within passing background checks? Will the same technician come every time to spray? Those questions were asked, and they were adequately answered, yes, yes on both.
So I don't, Matt, and I certainly don't speak for you, but I feel like it puts you in a little bit of an awkward position, because you're making the recommendation as the purchasing department, and you feel like you have vetted that with the departments. And here you come to present in front of all of us.
Yes.
Which I know is never comfortable, and then this, it feels a little bit like a splitting of the hairs, I don't know why.
But at the same time, the department that became me was called out there.
Oh, actually.
Be the point to fulfill that process. And we then would, we'll deal with interacting with all the departments. If after coming back, you feel positive, also that they did all those departments to make a recommendation. So we're the, that's something many experts would say.
Notice one of the questions, does your company bond?
Yes.
An indication of no, this paperwork.
Yes, we're bonded, measuring requirements. Yes, of course, like I say, every employee at Oregon has a background check, not just our techs or whatever. Secretary, and then we do drug testing. When they start, we do one random every year.
So are you telling me the company is bonded?
Yes.
Just an indication here that.
All right, I make a motion that we award the formal bid number one-one-one four dash one-five Pest Control Services to Oregon Pest Control as the lowest responsive bid and per the recommendation of the purchasing department. I'm sorry, but let me just amend that if I can't find budgeted in the various accounts for twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen.
Okay, the motion and second, all in favor, raise your hand. Three all opposed?
None.
You what?
None.
Okay. I'm going to abstain for personal reasons.
With the understanding of what is presented here, there's no additional cost to Potter County for any services that we need beyond what you just made.
Exactly.
Thank you for being present.
Number twenty-five, vehicle purchase to consider next one following purchase of twenty sixteen Mack dump truck from Malmo and Mack trucks that I wake up in amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars, utilizing buy board contract number four-three-zero dash one-three. Funds posted in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. Anybody wants to ex that? This was budgeted, I think it's.
There's possibly. The mags done it really well, so that's.
Okay, I have a motion. You want to do both of these at the same time, or you want to do one at the same time?
I just have a quick question for Carrie on item B, the fire equipment, the truck. It doesn't state on the agenda item, funds budgeted, and I thought it would be, but I just want to compare with you. This would be the two hundred thousand, correct? Okay, that is, okay, all right. Okay, so I have a motion for both of these.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of two thousand sixteen Mack dump truck from Ollaway and Mack trucks paid for in amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, utilizing buyback buy board contract number four-three-zero dash one-three. And also the purchase of two thousand sixteen Golden Fire fire truck from A for Battle Fire Women in amount of two hundred and eighty thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars, utilized in ACAC contract number FS two-two dash one-three. A circular motion.
Motion and second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five zero. Thank you. And number twenty-six, RFQ one-one-one five dash one-one-five, consider next one following request for qualifications. Roofing specification design services to Crenshaw Consulting Group LLC. As the highest evaluated firm and to approve the attached contract. Fund should be reimbursed by tax as part of the pay thirteen thirteen last form. Thank you.
David Harder and I have been working with the Fairgrounds for the direction of the Commissioners' Court. We're now two and a half years into this issue with them. We, the current status, as we, like you mentioned, we went out for RFQs on this, whether they be an architect, an engineer, a roof consultant. Out of them, we received Crenshaw, Architects, Icon, and Arco. Out of the three rankings by, or out of the rankings by David Harder and I, this was our ranking, was armed, was Crenshaw, Architects, Icon, and Arco. Fairgrounds, Virgil, I don't believe is here. His ranking was Crenshaw, down to Icon, Arco, and Architects, and Lewis. I just want to make you aware of something, there's some concerns that I have on this RFQ that went out. Virgil had shared with us that basically they would not be willing to work with Architects if they would have been the ones chosen. Since we all three agree that Crenshaw would be the highest base off qualifications, here's the issue, the contracts for which you have before you. There's an eighteen percent contract being presented to you, eighteen percent fee off the actual total construction cost presented to you today. The going market is eight point five to twelve percent. I think this is outrageous for them to come in and request this type of fee. And Dave can't explain to me that there are certain procedures that we need to follow from this point forward. I can tell you right now that the current contract that you have with Architects is on your project is eight point five percent. Arkell Smith and Cooper is ten percent. So that's kind of the standard, like I said, of where these fees should be. Typically, what I see happen on this and throughout the years, if you have a professional come in, they present to you a fee. The fee is only high. You go through your negotiation fee, yes, we'll reduce it back, say they reduce it back to twelve percent. At that point there, then the project design has changed. Where you have a lot, grander scale project, more than likely, they will make the fee back off it. It's just something that they do out there, I don't think it's fair to the property owners. Where do we go from here?
Mike, can I ask a question on that fee?
Yes.
So we have the scoring criteria, just the numbers, one through four, but we don't have what you actually scored them on. Was that fee not one of the scoring criterias?
No, because you do not ask for a fee, because this is basically on qualifications.
Okay, okay, okay. So it was an RFQ that went out.
Yes.
They came back, we got a draft of the contract, and that's where you saw this eighteen percent.
We received that Friday, and that's where we currently stand, Dave, if I'm not mistaken, the next step would be to receive for to negotiate the fee.
So should we, I mean, are you requesting that we pick this individual? You're saying you just need approval and go negotiate on that.
Well, we need, by law, I think the way we need to proceed is to negotiate the fee with them and the reimburseables as well as they have addressed in here, and there's some other items, our red-black-dolphin contract. If we cannot come to an agreement on a fee, then we don't know what the other people's firm's fees were. Then you would go to the next lowest, you'd go to the next highest qualified firm after that, and you start going down the ladder.
Which is Architects. And you know their fee because we worked with them on other projects.
We worked with them on other projects. I've spoken with the Texas Association of Counties, they also have a concern. They're the ones that this bill, as far as utilizing Crenshaw. Did not say they would not do it.
Oh, they do have a concern.
They have a concern of utilizing Crenshaw, do a past history, watching the same thing. Two of these firms right here, it was mentioned to me that they use that method, lower your fee, negotiate it, project design is finished to raise the fee back up in order to make the money back at the original request. By law, we've got to start somewhere, negotiate the fee and see if we can work that out. If for some reason we could not work it out, then we're going to have another problem with the Fair Board coming in saying, Architects, next, they purchased, already said we'd work. What's the deal with it? Because what they did to Potter County and the courthouse project, I guarantee you, whenever anyone was our general contractor, and they left, it would start spreading rumors that nobody would work for Potter County again. The rumor on the streets is, is due to Architects being our architect, they're the ones that messed up this project. General had nothing to do with it. And the subcontractors believe that as well. First of all, you have General that did on that front project, and subs follows that. So the word out there on the street is, that is from Virgil, that is his concern, he does not want them involved. I'm afraid they'll mess it up. All the architect does is out.
But at the end of the day, the authority lies with the Commissioners' Court, who will be selected, and we are leading them to help get those repairs done.
So you basically are asking, you know, what's the effect of purchasing?
I, is that the way we need to proceed?
So you're going to stay in front, you're going to try to negotiate the fee.
That's what the motion is to. I make a motion that we authorize our facilities director and county attorney to begin negotiations with Crenshaw Consulting Group LLC.
I'm not sure, could I interject here? I'm not sure if that's in our, in our authority, I would think that would need to be.
The purchasing, okay.
Now, I'm happy to assist, but I don't.
Okay, you want it just you, or should there be others involved?
I don't have a purchasing agent.
Okay, who was filling in in David's departure?
I am the assistant purchasing agent, but I'm not qualified.
Okay. So is this even, can we take action?
Yeah, I mean, we, I still, I still thank the purchasing, I mean, we'll be involved, but I mean, I'm just saying, I do think purchasing department needs to be involved.
Needs to be the main negotiation.
That's it, you know.
And I'll sit in and represent the office.
Sure.
Okay. So I'll restate my motion. I remember what I need to restate, but I'll try my best. To authorize our purchasing department, our county attorney, and our facilities director to negotiate a project fee with Crenshaw Consulting Group LLC. Is that okay, Dave? Have to say that appropriately.
Absolutely, thank you.
Absolutely, I'll second that.
The motion and second, all in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you.
And number twenty-seven, RFQ one-one-six dash one-five, consider next one following request for qualifications. Fiber optic planning design services to Manwiler Telecom Consulting Inc. As the highest evaluated firm and to approve the attached contract. Here, let's do it again.
Yes. This is for the proposed fiber that will build their task with their data center and a proposed new facility out by the jail. To get to that point, we have to have an engineering firm come in, they work with all the various entities like Techstock, railroads, the city, et cetera, et cetera, it's perfect to design to play out this route. And when they're done, one of their deliverables is a bid sheet that we can put out for bid to get construction costs. But this RFQ was strictly with the design engineering companies, just sort of building this first. We put the, we had the RFQ about a month ago, we put it out, we had four responses on it from various firms across the country. This is the highest evaluated firm, they did not negotiate a contract with them, and that contract was there, we put this back.
So Jason, it may be helpful in the future on the criteria, and I know you have this for ranking book, to know what the actual criteria is, like what A one means, what are you evaluating them on?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and that's okay, I think it's just more in the future, because there were a couple that came through that way. Do you have any concerns with the individual that came up, scoring wise?
No, no.
Customer services?
No, I know several other, they've done work for counties and other, they did work for a group called Fiber Inc. here in West Texas, so they're already familiar with dealing with the N Ds or anything. They've got a very good understanding of what we're trying to do and how to get there.
We're from Colorado.
I make a motion that we award ERQ one-one-one six dash one-five Fiber Optic Planning Design to Man.
Manwiler.
Manwiler Telecom Consulting Inc. as per the highest evaluated firm and to approve the contract.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, raise your hand.
I have a question. David told me that we had to decide whether the professional engineer does the design or a designer.
Yeah.
It's a twenty thousand dollar difference. Is that next?
No, that's, that's part of.
Oh, that's part of it. Oh.
It was the who, I'm sorry, Jason?
A professional engineer, that's part of the, that's part of the contract, there were two of the contract options.
Okay, so it's going to be the professional.
David, you're going to just run for your side, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
I just need to know which one is that?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Number twenty-eight, employment items, consider next one following the program on record management, transfer of Rob Johnson from Agent Defense to Record Management effective October one. Angry life extension office, the hiring of Mary Don Larson as administrative assistant effective October twenty-six. Maintenance of facilities, the hiring of Dora Gaden, 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 custody one as requestment for Lawrence Baca effective November one, twenty fifteen. IT department, the resignation of Brandon Plutton, Plutton, as network engineer effective October sixteen. The hiring of Kirk Parkus as network engineer effective October nineteen. Roden Bridge Department, the resignation of Jerry Allison as maintenance tech for retiring effective October eight, twenty fifteen. How long has Jerry been here?
Ten years.
Did y'all want to do a certificate appreciation for him?
Not many, he was seven days.
Okay, okay. Okay. The discharge of Dave Curry to seasonal mower effective October fifteen. The discharge of Thomas Rodriguez, a seasonal rope twister, effective October fifteen. And the hiring of Officer Lee's as maintenance tech as replacement for Jerry Allison, effective October nineteen. So I'm going to use motion for all those informants.
I can motion to accept all. Second.
Okay, the motion and second, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, Joe report, today is five hundred and thirty-nine people in our jail, almost have been pulled in, I think it was. Ninety-five of those are females, we have nine childrens. So, we have any agents on the show?
No.
Yes, sir.
I was going to add this other percentage you wanted. Our felony percent is eighty-one percent, and the class misdemeanor percent is nineteen percent.
Sheriff, I have a question. Since we are so full, and we have nine and childrens, and we now have approved a new contract to take inmates in, are we ever discerning that we're too full, we can't take our new in because we're shipping ours out, what is that process?
That was one of the questions that I asked of the county judge when we called, what is your daily population? He said two. So, he said, I think we're weak without anybody. I did just get a request from Hudson County, apparently their jail's fixing to be shut down November fifth, and they want us to house male inmates. At this point, I'm going to probably say no, we just, we're heading into the business season of our jail. Unfortunately, there is issues.
But I do think we're on the cusp of something, because I feel like this is the wave of the future. I mean, jails are so expensive to maintain in our small counties. I mean, jails are so expensive to maintain in our small counties. I don't wrestle with that now. Um, I, I do believe that is the new future, the next fifteen to twenty years, to start to pool our resources together. Interesting, okay.
Okay, before we do executive session, I just want to make an announcement today, is the, is our first mental health call, we start today. I'm real excited about that, it's something I ran on, and we're starting that today, and we're at the jail. So, uh, say a little prayer for us, as we go out and, and start this, this new court. Uh, I think it will help population in the jail, which will get them out of there, and give them the help that they need, which they need prior to, uh, most of wars. Okay, um, number thirty-one, executive session, opinion litigation, hold it, executive session to consult with county attorney, we brought the settlement of warranty claim on the American contract project. Pursuant to Texas government code, section back on work, two, two zero seven one, having a little body, deserve ground for pressure, please turn it back, say hello. And taking action, go. We will, it's eleven, eleven, we will resents, eleven, eleven, and we will be back.